All right, Ed, if you want to lead us in the vacation, we'll get started followed by the pledge.
Love to. Heavenly Father, we just thank you tonight for this opportunity to be together as a borough council. And I just ask you to be with us in our homes as we meet. Just important wisdom to us. Just let you be the guide, the Holy Spirit be the guide in this meeting, Lord. I'm just thanking you now for your presence. And just asking you to continue to bless our community and our police officers, Lord, our fire department. Just ask you to be with them as they travel throughout our community to protect us. And so I'm asking these things now, in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America.
And to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. All right, I'll just go ahead and do it. Mr. Crouch? I see he's on. Mr. Deal, or Mr. Deal, Mrs. Deal.
Sorry. I'm here.
Mr. Erickson? Mr. Sinkovich? Or Darius?
Here.
And I'm here. Okay. All right, you have before you the consent agenda. You have the meeting minutes from December 8th, 2020, from the joint meeting with the Newville Water Sewer Authority. The December 15th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, and the December 30th, 2020, special meeting minutes. As well as the January 5th, 2021, public work session minutes. Any questions about those?
Yes, sir.
All right, in your packets are the bills. Let me find my page. There we go. All right, so we have Martin and Martin Incorporated for $110. Irwin and McKnight PC, $187.50. The Galata Group, $935. Edmund Fuels, $260.80. Prime Watch Technologies, $366.96. AB Martin Roofing Supply, $68.38. Higher Information Group, $105. JFG Funding, $269. Co's Oil Service, $122.22. Atlantic Tactical, $665.07. Raybold Services, $60. Andeco Incorporated, $319.16. Barrick Tire, $23. Timothy Barrick, $327.40. Boston Mutual Insurance, $413.61. Sailor's Market, $119.87. News Chronicle, $558. AB Martin Roofing Supplies, $63.98. Irwin McKnight PC, $2070. PA State Association of Boroughs, $234. Salzman Hughes PC, $90. Data Works plus $625. For a total general fund bills of $7,993.95. Under highway aid bills, Pro Hydraulics Incorporated, $333.56. For total highway bills of $333.56. Any questions about those?
Sir.
I think it's having a hard time logging in. I don't see it here yet.
Okay, for the treasures report, general fund checking, $5,831.55. General fund checking, $1,372.60. Street lighting account, $419.42. Fire tax account, $55,285.52. General expense fund, $331.40. Nuville area events, $5,207.40. Highway aid liquid fuels checking, $10,253.40. Payroll checking, $19,719.41. These next two numbers are going to be different than what's in your packet because they're as of today. The police pension plan, $367,599.23. The non-uniform pension plan, $493,169.89. The Borough Joint Veterans Council, $946.63. Capital Improvement Fund, $1,467.25. And the tax anticipation loan, $989.79. Any questions on those? Okay, and in your packets, you have written reports from the police chief, the mayor, the zoning code officer, the enforcement officer, the street superintendent, chief plants operator, field operations, you have EDA. And I believe you also had planning commission notes as well. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Joey, move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. And any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no. Any abstentions? And motion carries. All right, down to verbal reports. Police chief reports. Chief?
Okay. Last monthly report for 2020, December 2020, 190 calls for service for the month of December, which gave us a total of 2,556 calls for service for the entire year. Traffic enforcement for the month of December. 19 traffic citations issued. 15 traffic warnings issued. For the year, 569 traffic citations were issued. 173 warnings. I think that comes out to about 24%. Warnings is where that came out for, for the year. Patrol vehicle mileage for the month of December 2091. For a total of 21,099 miles for the entire year of 2020. Any questions on that? Codes enforcement, I'll just touch on that a little bit. Alexis has been working pretty hard on that for the first few weeks. I know she has a lot of irons in the fire. And I know she's gotten a lot of things completed already. Just for one instance, I had taken her out for probably about an hour and a half around town. And was just showing her a few things to look for. And in that first hour and a half, we found 16 cars that were unregistered, uninspected, inoperable, sitting around town. And I know we found a lot more since then. So she's working pretty hard to catch up on a lot of those, and a lot of those have already complied already and moved out or got their stuff updated. I mentioned earlier about firearms. Fairly certain that I have a new firearm that we're gonna test coming in here in the next week. The original firearm that we did test, we ended up, we just can't buy any. I can't, you can't get them right now from anybody. So I tried a different company. I'm expecting something in from them this week, and we'll see how that goes. Even if we do get the firearms, you can't buy ammunition right now. It's, it's, it's pretty ridiculous when it comes to that. That is all I have for my report, unless anybody has some questions.
Any questions for chief?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
It's a safety matter at the red light in the borough. We've had 18-wheelers getting close to knocking down that pole. I wonder if the chief would comment. If that pole comes down, we'd have, we won't have electric in good part of town for a good while. And it could be dangerous as well. It could fall on somebody. And I just wondered if, if chief has any ideas how we could, at least initially, for the short duration, do something in terms of barriers or what have you to, to reduce the potential for 18-wheelers turning around there and hitting that pole?
Chief? Yeah, yeah, definitely. Things have changed a little bit there in the last few, few weeks. We've had three rather severe times that the pole was, was struck in the last couple of weeks. Do have all those on, on video. I started making myself a folder of such. Quality of the driver seems to be going downhill. We have had, like I said, three in the last couple of weeks. Two of them were so, well, all three of them were so severe enough that they blew the tires out on the trailers. Two of those disabled the tractor and trailer in the middle of the intersection for over two hours each time. Until we could get a large tow truck in to drag them off of the pole because they were wedged so tight on the pole. The one time in particular, the driver drove so far up under the pole. She was within three feet of the top of her trailer, rolling into the building on the corner, on the southeast corner of the intersection. If not be for some pedestrians that screamed and yelled at her till she stopped going. She was gonna do everything she could do to try to slide that trailer around the intersection off of that pole. That pole has about a 3/8 inch thick steel plate that surrounds it. That plate is driven the whole way back into the wood. At this point, whenever anybody hits the pole, you can see the pole start to swing now. You can see the traffic lights start to swing where before it was pretty sturdy when the pole was new and the plate was new. It's getting worse by the day. I really think somebody's gonna flip a trailer over there or something here. Then we're gonna end up with a pedestrian hurt or somebody in another vehicle hurt or somewhere along those lines. I really think we need to sit down with, with the right people, with, with PennDOT and maybe our local politicians and see what we can do there as far as short term, a short-term goal and a long-term goal. I personally like to see, as far as a short-term goal, is if we could put maybe some sort of Jersey barriers or something along those lines to protect that pole and to protect that sidewalk, to make that turn even harder to take. As hopefully a deterrent. Not sure if that would work or not, but I think if we even made it a little bit harder, maybe they wouldn't try at all. But what we're doing is definitely not working. It's kind of futile when, when it comes to us and the citations. I think I've spoken about it before, you know, but as far as citations go, citations are about worth $12.50 each to us. It's about what the borough gets out of them until we pay the officers to, to write citations until they go over to court and we stand at court and get overtime. It is a losing battle financially wise for the borough. And I don't think we're making a dent in deterrent anything either. We're chasing their tail. I think we, we need to do something here. This has been going on since I've been here and we've not done anything more than maybe get a couple more signs put up that they ignore.
Chief, is, what it, is the fine, can the fine be adjusted or is that set by the state?
That's set by the state. The only thing I have a question and I don't know the answer to it would be, I mean, we're using the the section now for, you know, making an illegal turn for disobeying a traffic control device. That, of course, is a state fine. I don't know if we could look at using a borough ordinance. I'm not sure that that would work on, on a state road to maybe increase the fine. But I really don't think it matters what the fine is. As long as they don't see a patrol car sitting there that second, they're gonna take the chance that they can make that turn without getting caught because they don't want to have to drive to Carlisle or wherever they need to drive to get around that intersection. I just, I mean, these warehouses are going up one after another. I don't see the truck traffic changing anytime soon. It's gonna get worse and worse.
What would be the cost of of putting one or two Jersey barriers there? Can we do that since the state rules? I mean, of course, it'd be on the, on the sidewalk on the two sides of the hole. Is that something we should look into, see if it's feasible? Is it, is the cost, is it cost effective?
I think you could probably borrow two Jersey barriers, but I'm not sure that the Jersey barrier design would be maybe exactly what I would want. Because I think that thinking about that, I think maybe that's possibly even gonna maybe make it worse because the side of the Jersey barrier is kind of like a ramp. And if the trailer would go up the side of that Jersey barrier, I think it would make it even more possible to, to roll the trailer over. I, I'd like to see more of a round barrier put up, something like the, the high school put up out in front of their cafeteria up there. If we could put one of those on each, each side of that, that telephone pole, that wouldn't be something that the trailers would ride up on.
Yeah, Todd, I was gonna, I was gonna speak, say a little bit of the same thing. If you put a Jersey barrier, that's something actually you could have trailer wheels run up on and then the trailer get hung up on there. You need a crane to pick them off from it. So I, I agree, that's, that's probably not, not, I mean, you're, you're, I think your, your general line of thought is, is a good one. But not sure the Jersey barriers themselves are the, are the solution.
What is the solution?
Uh, what's the cost of replacing that pole?
I do not know. I just recall it was replaced either shortly before I started or shortly after. And from my recollection, recollection of that, I don't think there was electric to town for, for about half of town for two days when that was out the last time because that, that pole is one of the most busy poles in town with the stuff that it has on it.
I think we should come up with an ordinance which says that anyone who strikes that pole with a tractor-trailer is fined $1,000 plus 500 in legal fees. Make it, make it hurt and give us a fund towards replacement of that thing. I mean, I just think, I, you know, I think we have to do that. We can talk to PennDOT about doing it, but we have to do it to protect the town and to, to stop a more tragic. I mean, we're talking about renovating some of those buildings and you don't want to put a lot of money into renovations and have a tractor-trailer sitting in the front room. We just can't afford a major tip-over accident there in the, in that intersection.
Now, from my understanding, where that trailer almost rolled into it there a couple of weeks ago. Like I said, it, it was within three feet of the building. And from my understanding, there's a, a child's bed just inside that window. So that's, that's kind of what we're, what we're up against there.
Why don't we, why don't we write an ordinance to that effect to make the fine 1,500, 1,000, whatever it is. That's a pretty good deterrent.
Well, it would get the attention of the trucking companies, which is what you need. The drivers, you know, unless you're gonna, unless you're gonna have the state troopers come in and inspect the vehicle for violations, that could be a deterrent too. But the reality is that we need to have some teeth. I recently, took me a while to do it, but I got restitution from a California trucking company for a township in which the truck rolled off 81, it damaged the township road underneath. It took me a while to get it, but I got it. But the point is, we can't afford to have that pole come down and we can't afford to have a truck roll over.
Well, if, if a truck, if a truck takes that pole down, their insurance will, will be paying for the replacement anyway. So I don't know that the borough is responsible for, for paying for that. But but the, but the, I mean, the idea of a deterrent is, is, yes. Most of the truckers are gonna figure they're not gonna be back in town anyway. So paying a, a fine isn't, isn't, you know, one-time fine for them is, is probably not a real deterrent. Now, if it's, if it gets that steep, then it might, but then we're gonna need to, you know, post that clearly so that they, they see and know that before they get to the intersection and attempt to turn. So, or it still won't be a deterrent.
What other options do we have? This is clearly a safety issue. It's a dangerous one.
I mean, things that we've done in the past that haven't worked, we checked into the companies that, that designed the maps, that go into the GPS systems that they use. You know, that's 90% of the common excuses. Their GPS told them to turn that way. There's only two companies that, that draw those maps. And we contacted both of those companies close to a decade ago about getting that changed on their maps and could never get anywhere. On top of that, the first few warehouses that went in over there, I know there's been a couple more open since. But the first few warehouses that went in over there, we went over multiple times and met with the, the safety directors in those buildings and gave them our concerns, gave them maps of preferred routes through the borough. And none of that has seemed to work.
Yeah, the, and the mapping companies won't make any change until we convince PennDOT to put their, put a restriction in place because they're, they're looking at it as, as an approved state route. So they're, they're not going to put any restrictions in place. It, it is a catch-22. We're, we're, the really, the, the real solution is to get PennDOT to declare an off-limits route for tractor-trailers. And, and that's, that's going to be a, a, something that takes, it's a battle that's gonna take some time.
And would, would that off-limit root, root, can it be like narrowed down to just no right turn or is it all straight through traffic? You know, I guess how restrictive are, are they is what I'm getting at.
It would be, I think they can put a restriction in place for no turns. There are, there are different types of, of restrictions in place for in different areas. The, they, they are going to be very, if we're trying to get them to restrict all through traffic or whatever, that's going to be an almost impossible to accomplish because they're going to, they're, they're going to say that is not at all practical. The, the thing they're probably going to look, you know, they're probably, their objection to restricting turns is the provision of a good alternate route. And the, the problem is, the, the only good alternate is to direct trucks down 81 to Shippensburg or up to Carlisle to the turnpike there. Because if they're coming through here, they're either coming from or to, going to the turnpike. That's, that's the primary reason for coming into town and making that turn. So it's the, it's getting the alternate de- determined and then somehow getting that posted so that the truckers know which way to go.
Have we gotten our political representatives involved in this at all?
Okay, so going back a number of years when Mayor Finkie was chief of police, we did have a meeting with our state representatives, PennDOT people. Ed, you were there.
Yes, sir.
Out at the traffic light, Mike Frye. We requested a no-turn restriction which was approved. A few years after that, we requested additional signage as part of a, a study with the Turnpike Commission in PennDOT. And that was to put up signs out in Newburgh to direct trucks into Shippensburg and away from Newville. And also to get the Turnpike Commission to put signs up on the turnpike so that they would not use the Blue Mountain interchange. They would go to Middlesex and then turn back and come down 81. We did not get cooperation on any of those requests. The only thing that I can tell you at this point is, as Mike said, you know, if a truck does damage anything at the intersection, their insurance will be held responsible. In terms of putting up bollards or barriers, we have to go through PennDOT for that because the roads are state roads. We're subject to highway occupancy permits and we just can't go down and begin making improvements without a permit or authorization from PennDOT. And I think additional signage would be one of the things that I would request. Have signs put up in advance, have those signs marked with strobe lights so that they attract the attention of the drivers. And I think, you know, one of the things that the chief brought up, you know, bollards that would protect the poles. I would ask for those. And again, we would require PennDOT permits to install those. But I think your best bet is to send a letter to the district executive, Mike Kaiser, put all this down in writing and ask Mike for his help. But I'll tell you this, the days of getting your local senator or state rep to get involved in these things, they don't carry a lot of weight anymore with PennDOT. PennDOT has its rules and regulations. And I think we would be better off going on record and writing to the district representative, Mike Kaiser. See what Mike could do, set up a meeting with he, Mike and someone from his traffic unit out at the red light and see what we can do.
All right. Should that, should that letter come from, from the, the borough solicitor or is that something you could send?
That's, that's something that should come from the Borough Council. Ultimately, Mike, anything we do, if we are permitted to do anything there in terms of signs and so forth, Mike will give us direction. And of course, you know, Chief Cosier's worked with PennDOT on this. Chief Finkie worked with PennDOT on this. And we have to follow their regulations. We have to post the signs accordingly. And we have to obtain whatever permits are needed to put in those devices. So it all starts with a letter to the district executive and asking for his cooperation and help. All right, how about we get a motion to draft that letter? It wouldn't hurt, hurt to also probably carbon copy it to, to our state representative and senator.
A motion.
So Bob moved it.
Second.
It was, we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. One thing, if, chief, if you have a photograph of that truck that was hung up next to the building, if your officers have a photograph or two, if you could send it, I think that would be helpful.
I have videos.
If you could send a video, that'd be great. And um, because PennDOT has to understand that if there's a rollover, that, that intersection is gonna be closed for hours. And um, it's gonna, it's gonna cause a mess. And the last thing PennDOT likes is to ha- have a media showing up at a big mess that takes hours to clean up.
Yeah, it was just two hours just to get the truck drug off of the pole.
And it wasn't rolled over yet. So send that video showing it climbing the pole, um, and uh, that might help.
Now, as, as for the ordinance, if council members want the solicitor to look into an ordinance, uh, you know, that's a, a separate matter also under the discretion of the Borough Council.
I'd be interested to see what else is out there. I don't know if the chief through his network, you know, has any, anything like that that's already out there. Um, there's no point in writing an ordinance if, if it's not enforceable. You know, I, I'd be interested to see what's out there.
I would say this, you know, to the chiefs locally that uh, have addressed this problem at the subway in Carlisle, uh, was Chief Carver from North Middleton Township and Chief Landis from Carlisle Borough. Worked together and uh, came up with a pretty good plan. Uh, if you go down six forty-one, you'll see all sorts of signs in advance. And we have none of that up in the borough. So I know that was something that those two chiefs worked on cooperatively.
That's a great idea, having signs in advance.
We've asked for it, Bob. We, you know.
Do we need permission to do that or what?
Well, the problem is, you know, the, we're, we would be erecting those signs outside the borough and other townships.
Another, another option, it doesn't really solve the problem of trucks turning right, but can that pole be moved?
Uh, the pole that we're talking about, they brought a, uh, they drilled for two days, Scott, just to get that pole in the ground. Cause that whole corner is on solid rock.
That might have been a sign that they shouldn't have put a pole there.
But it, it can be moved, but you know, it's, it's on, it's on solid rock.
Yeah. I mean, my other concern is, you know, we finally got the, we got the, the light on the list, you know, to get it replaced eventually. We're, we're gonna go and replace it. And then two weeks later, a truck sent, come in and damaged the pole that, you know, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to put up.
Uh, the other safety issue on that light is it goes from green to red. Where's the yellow? Where's the walk sign? We have elderly people living here. Somebody's gonna get killed on that, now, on that corner there, intersection. That's dangerous.
We actually, Bob, I would agree. We have a number of intersections that we, it'd be nice, like what, what's outside of Zion, those, there's uh, there's crosswalk signs. Be nice to get some of those. I mean, there it's uh, there at the um, the old bank, there at the print shop, um, it, people, this isn't Dickinson College. Nobody stops for, for anybody that's standing in the intersection. So, um, but you know, there, there, the crosswalk by the police station, it would be nice to have something there. Um, there's, there's a number of those locations around it.
Well, why don't we make a plan to do those things slowly?
That sounds like a good job for the public safety.
There's the money. Show me the money.
All right, anything else for chief? All right, thank you, chief.
You bet.
All right, uh, fire chief, I think we see Bradley on here.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, for the, for the year of twenty twenty, we responded to two hundred and ninety-six incidents, uh, thirty-seven of which were in Newville Borough. Just to give you guys uh, some quick updates on our goals for this year, uh, we're gonna be hosting the entire series of pump training for all of our operators, uh, Blozersville and surrounding municipalities. So I'll get with uh, Fred and the Water and Sewer Authority whenever we get to that point to notify them of what hydrants we're gonna be using. Uh, more than likely, it'll be at Oak Flat, uh, back by the dumpster where we're kinda out of the way. Um, and then another real big project that's occurring this year is, uh, we have selected uh, KME, which is up in uh, Northern Pennsylvania to build our new rescue. Uh, we're waiting on the final bid to come back. We're hoping to have it back by our February meeting and uh, be under contract with them by the middle of March for the purchase of a new rescue vehicle for in Newville. Our current one is twenty-nine years old. And until this one arrives, it'll actually be probably pretty close to uh, thirty-one years old. So um, with that, I know you said it earlier there, Mr. Penner. What was the uh, amount of the fire tax?
Yeah, let me tell you here the exact number. Fifty-five, two eighty-five and fifty-two cents.
Okay. All right, yeah, cause we're working to uh, to get a financial plan together. And when I talked to Fred back in August, we had heard, or he had said it was around fifty-one thousand. And then Trent reached out in December and we were told twelve thousand. So I just wanted to double check and make sure where we were, see where, see where we were with that. Um, once we have the final plan together for how we're gonna proceed with the purchase and where the funds are coming from, I'm hoping that'll be uh, in February as well. Um, now, you know, then we'll submit the formal letter to you guys for money out of that account to go towards the purchase of that unit. Um, outside of that, I don't think I have anything else that's uh, big on the agenda at this point in time, other than, you know, we're kinda still stuck. We're not able to do fundraising. We're not able to host our bingos or anything like that. So we're still, we're or uh, working on some gun raffle tickets and stuff like that to kinda bridge some of the gap. But until COVID clears out and we can get more than twenty-five percent capacity or fifty percent capacity, it's uh, it's, it's been a tough year, so. Other than that, I don't, unless anybody has anything for me?
Any questions for Bradley?
Hey Bradley, how much do you think it cost you for a no bingo this year or last year? Any idea?
Yeah, so we estimated that we lost uh, right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year.
For two thousand twenty.
Uh, due to not being able to bingo. The su- yeah, the super app, um, and then uh, uh, meat raffles and Sunday dinners, like all the smaller ones that don't really bring in a whole lot. But bingo averages, I think it's around a hundred thousand a year just by itself. And we haven't had that for ten months, almost eleven months.
You didn't have the super raffle at all this year?
Thankfully, there's been uh, we did it virtually. So we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have the, the actual event, which is where we make the majority of the money for that function.
Are there any safety issues that you're concerned with that you think we should know about?
Um, no, not off the top of my head. I mean, obviously the red light's an issue and you guys just hit that. Um, outside of that, I don't really think that there's anything that I can think of off the top of my head.
How about having smoke detectors for those who can't afford it in town?
Um, currently we're working on, uh, I'm trying to secure some funding through uh, some different grant sources that are out there so that we can purchase. I'll, I'll do a bulk purchase of smoke detectors because currently I think we have one left. At the time, at this time. We used to get from ABC twenty seven and Lowe's and uh, shit, any of those last year.
Is there a way to advertise it in Valley Time, something like that or what? Ask for donations for uh, for providing smoke detectors to those who are low income or senior citizens who can't afford to buy it? I mean, it ought to be a way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we could put, I'm sure we could put a press release out and get, you know, gets something. And, you know, or get, get it through the, uh, through some social media outlets, whether it be on the borough's page, our page, stuff like that. Yeah, that's definitely an option that we can explore.
I'm always available. If you wanna give me a call and talk about any options you have or any suggestions you have for safety, both you and the police department, the great chief and yourself, wonderful people. But we need to look after the people in town, those who can't afford it, those who are elderly. If we save a life, we save the wonder.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what we're here for. For our citizens, to protect them. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Bradley? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, the uh, financial report, uh, these figures are all as of the end of December. Traffic fines, eight hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents, non-traffic to seventeen twenty-nine. Clerk of court fines to twenty-eight-ten for a total of twelve hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, balance in the police department's checking account, eleven thousand three hundred and four dollars and thirty-four cents. Fourteen ninety-six twenty in the K nine account. One seventy-nine fifty-nine, the usable balance on the department's debit card and two hundred and eleven dollars remaining in the auxiliary uh, police account. Now, a, a, a couple of additional comments that the discussion, I would hope if we're going to spend a few hundred thousand dollars on a new red light, that, that the uh, that the pedestrian crossing lights are part of that. I, I mean, that would be the perfect, uh, we, do you know Fred, wh- whether or not that's one of the requirements or is that something extra we have to add for, ask for?
That's included in the estimate, um, push buttons, the uh, the signal head and also ADA compliant ramps and crossing. That's all included.
And I, I, I agree with what uh, Scott said. Need to change the mindset of, of, of the majority of people who drive through the community because we don't have um, the pedestrian uh, crossing lights anywhere in town except down Lucy's Corner. People don't pay attention. They just flat don't. Uh, they could drive through Newville and not pay attention to that. As soon as they get into Carlisle Borough, they wouldn't think of driving through a clock crosswalk with the pedestrian lights on. Here, we're, we're, we're fighting a different mindset. And then the discussion about the, the, the trucks at, at the red light intersection. The incident that Todd referred to years ago, the uh, driver's insurance company did pay for the cost of the repairs uh, and replacement of the pole. But at the same time though, it cost the borough uh, a couple of thousand dollars in traffic control time. Uh, that we had to pay the auxiliary police to provide traffic uh, uh, control over the time period it took to replace that pole and get everything in operation again. So it, it's not actually when something like that happens, it's not cost-free for the borough. And uh, I promise you, I only have one more item. Couple of uh, meetings ago, council approved a restricted parking space in front of the Bulldog Prep Academy um, daycare center. What we ended up with there was, the sign was brought up there that, that had been taken out down at Mission Outreach, Outreach that just said uh, loading, unloading zone, thirty-minute time limit. Uh, when if I remember the uh, discussion about that sign, the wording was to be more specific. What we've ended up with is an abuse of that sign uh, and that unloading and loading zone uh, by people who are not associated with the daycare. The chief and I have had a number of discussions about it. He has reached out to the um, people uh, whose, one employee was, was abusing that spot. It worked for a while and then it slid backwards to the same thing. Um, made one last attempt a few days ago, which once again, uh, yesterday, the vehicle was parked half in the parking spot in front of that, that area and half in the, in the restricted parking spot. So, I would like to propose that we have a new sign put up tha- that along the lines of uh, Bulldog Prep Academy Parking Only. Uh, seven AM in the morning till six PM in the evening. That's their hours. And, and the reason for, for that, we're, we're talking about a, a safety issue with the safety of elementary school and kindergarten-aged children. Because there are parents who drop their, their school-aged children off there on their way to work, there's a school bus stop there. That's where they, they bring the kids out. The school, uh, one of the smaller school buses picks the children up for kindergarten and elementary school right there and then drops them off at the end of the day until their parents, um, uh, come home from work and are able to pick them up. So, so we're talking about, even though someone may say, well, what the business across the street may argue they need a sign. Well, they really don't. We're, we're talking about a safety issue, doing what we should do to protect uh, ele- again, elementary, kinderage, uh, kindergarten-aged kids. Uh, so I, I would like to see that the sign that's there now, which was just moved from another location, doesn't really address or help address the issue um, that it's supposed to, that, that we just put up a new sign that is very specific about who that parking space is for uh, during that timeframe. Prior to that, and in, in, and after the six PM in the evening, can be used by anyone. And I remember from our initial discussion about this, that was, that was the intent. Uh, but the sign that ended up being put up, uh, didn't fulfill that intent.
So we're talking about one spot, right? It's not, it's not multiple.
No, just one, right in the corner.
Legally defensible?
I mean, I, I'm more con- I, I'm, I'm concerned, well, first of all, thirty-minute parking, then you don't need thirty minutes to pop in, get your kid and come back out. Should be more like fifteen minutes, ten minutes. Um, I, I'm concerned about putting the business's name on, on the sign. If, it should just be, you know, ten-minute parking of, you know, between the hours or whatever and whatever. And if you need two spots, then do it. And if you need two spots, then do it, um. I don't know.
I, I would think it more, be more appropriate instead of putting a business name on, say, you could put something on for, uh, regarding, that is for, uh, parents, you know, dropping off children or whatever, I've seen signs like that in some other, other, uh, municipalities. But near schools or whatever.
Do, do we find, do we find the, uh, ones that are parking there?
We have, we have made the, between myself and the chief, several attempts. It, it actually, rather than beating around the bush, it's, it, it's the pizza shop's delivery driver who just totally ignores the, uh, parking restriction as, as far as the time limit, the, the vehicle sometimes is parked there for a couple of hours. And, and, um, even the owners of the, of the daycare have spoken to him personally, just blows them off. It, it is, we're, we're trying because there, he represents another in-town business. We tried to settle the issue, uh, without writing, writing any tickets, but it hasn't worked.
I would think that if you have to work a couple hours for free because you're paying for parking tickets, that maybe that would send a message, I don't know.
But we still, we still need, uh, to change the wording, a sign with new wording, uh, because the, the sign that's there now doesn't address the situation.
Mayor, what about a sign that said, no parking from whenever, six AM to six PM or something, loading zone? They just flat out say no parking, that's what I've seen in other, uh, parochial schools in Carlisle that have buses coming in to pick up kids, there's a yellow line and no parking signs during the school hours.
Well, that, that, that sounds like a reasonable option.
That would be more defensible legally, I would think.
Does that permit for, does that permit for parents to drop off and, and get, and still park for that or?
That's what it's, that's what it's for, it's a loading zone, kids.
Okay.
Well, but the, but, but the, the, uh, the offender in this case could argue that he's parking there to load his vehicle as well.
Right, right.
Uh, yes, for, for two and a half hours.
I, I just, I, I'm just to the point where, you know, if they're, if they're breaking the law, give them a ticket. You know, they've, they've been warned how many times, um. I, I don't like the thirty-minute, I think that's too long, but, and I agree with the sign, sign part, but that's just my opinion, so.
Yeah, and as I said yesterday, he still made the spot unusable because he had his vehicle parked, um, half in the, the spot in front and half in that one. And so it had, even though he wasn't technically using the entire spot, he was using enough of it that it wasn't usable.
Wasn't that illegal? Have a few spots like? Isn't that illegal?
Uh, actually, since we took the parking meters out, no, it's not, that, that's, um.
Would it be, uh?
There's no parking lines defined there.
Oh, so there's not a line designating where that parking space is, okay. So maybe that's something we need to do too.
Yeah, I would, I would use yellow paint or something to, to find the area that you're having no parking in. In addition with the sign.
So what is it that you want done? Let's start with the wording for the sign first. How do you want the sign worded?
Can, can you, can you, can you say child drop off and pick up? Can you be that specific?
Sure, that's what it is.
Fifteen minute?
Yeah, I'd say fifteen minute limit between the hours and six and six, isn't it?
Yeah.
Actually, se- seven, seven to six, seven A to six P.
Okay.
And, uh, fifteen-minute parking, seven AM to six PM.
Weekdays, we're all week.
Uh, weekday.
One thing at a time, Bob.
Okay.
Fifteen minutes, seven AM to six PM, and then what's the next line?
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday. And then now, school loading, unloading, what do you want?
I mean, whatever's, whatever's defensible, I guess, I mean, if you can, if you can say school loading and unloading, it's not technically a school.
You can call, well, you can call it a school, um, a school zone.
It's not a cab to me.
Yeah, technically, it's not a school though, but, um.
But you're having public school buses come and parents dropping off, it's, it's a, it should, it should be a no parking zone, um, for, uh, for children.
How about children drop off though?
Sounds good. Cause you don't want, you don't want the, their employees parked in there either, it's for the parents coming in to drop off and pick up.
Okay, so the sign will be worded fifteen-minute parking, seven AM, six PM, Monday through Friday, children drop off zone, anything else? Now let's talk about the, uh, marking of the space, you want a space marked uh, in accordance with our zoning ordinance, it would be ten by twenty. Now, if you paint it yellow, chief, people may look at it as how, how should we do it, white or yellow?
You're muted, chief.
What does the yellow signify as opposed to white? Anything specific?
White's regulatory.
So white would be acceptable?
Okay, then someone needs to make them. Someone needs to make a motion.
I think you're making your sign way too wordy, for one thing. I think you'd make it a fifteen-minute, ten or fifteen-minute student loading and unloading zone, period. Don't worry about the Monday through Friday, don't worry about the seven AM to six PM. Um, just let the police department worry about the, the enforcement portions of that. If that makes sense. I don't like having signs that are two feet wide and three feet tall and you have to sit there for five minutes to read it.
You don't like signs with fine print?
No. You can't get the gist of it in about five seconds.
So the sign will read fifteen-minute parking, children drop off zone.
Fifteen-minute children loading, unloading zone.
Everybody go with that?
Good.
And white line.
I would just make sure, um, your space is properly marked, you know, with a, with a bar, um. At the beginning of it and at, at the end of it, that way there's no parking halfway in it and halfway out of it. So the space is properly defined. Is that the last space, mayor?
Yes, yes, it is.
Those lines are really helpful, I know that when we put them on, on High Street and Main Street, a lot of people appreciated that.
They were helpful just to get the officers to park the cars the correct way in front of the police station.
Scott, do you want to have someone make a motion for that?
Yep, do we have a motion?
Motion, take a motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded, ain't further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, no, fortunately for the rest of you, that's it.
That's the.
What about mine, Randy?
All right, moving on to, uh, the, uh, local emergency management, um, just, you, you've probably been getting all the updates on weather, uh, from Bob Barrett. Uh, Bob also reported that WEMA has purchased, uh, uh, light towers and, or a, a light tower that can be used by all the municipalities, which will be extremely helpful whenever a truck takes out our, our, uh, red light, so. Anything else to add to that, Fred?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, uh, solicitors report.
Oh, we have a few things.
A couple.
That's right.
All right, the first one is the, uh, ordinance twenty-one twenty, or twenty-one oh one, um, approving uh, amended rules and regulations of the Newville Borough Civil Service Commission.
We had to advertise that in, uh, cause of last, well, we advertised it in the Sentinel this time. Uh, I didn't realize that the, uh, News Chronicle stopped publishing on Tuesdays. So that hurts us a little bit since we have Tuesday meetings. And we need seven days before we, of, uh, distance between when we advertise and when we have our meetings, so. So that's been advertised and it's, uh, if there are no questions, it's subject to, uh, being adopted.
Any questions?
Anything on the internet, Fred?
No comments, no comments received.
All right, any other questions on that? If not, we're looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, Mr. Mayor, will you, uh, will you do the, um, swearing-in of the two? I believe there's two, is there anything else we need to know about with that?
No, I, I, I'll do that, just have to get them to the Borough Office.
Okay. All right, item number two, ordinance twenty-one oh two, this is the ordinance, um, establishing the police pension plan, um, for the Borough of Newville.
Again, it's been advertising the Sentinel, um, we worked with our expert on it and although it probably could be done by resolution, um, we need a standalone ordinance in order to enable us to move to a new um, investment advisor, um, and we've, we've been looking hard at, uh, Mid Penn Bank, it's a real good job for us in other respects, so a standalone ordinance is, is, uh, important and, uh, we'll have some more discussions about this at the work session. Uh, we'll need a committee, an investment committee made of, um, people, we'll, we'll describe that at the works, at the work session on Tuesday.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, need a motion?
So move.
It's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other, uh, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, item number three, resolution twenty-one oh two, um, this is the adoption of the twenty-twenty Cumberland County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
It's a long, uh, mitigation plan that was adopted by the county and they want all the municipalities in the county to, uh, adopt it, adopt it and, uh, this resolution does that.
Any questions?
Yeah, Marcus, can you just condense that and explain that what that is, just in a condensed form?
In condensed form, the resolution, of the, what the county did?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's almost what, two hundred pages? It's a long thing, I didn't print it out, but, uh, it's subject to, to review. Fred, the sort of hazard talks about our, uh, um, natural disasters and other things, is that right?
Looks at things like flooding, you know, uh, potential hazards from flooding, roads that may close if there were to be a, a slide, subsidence, things like that. Each town is to do its own analysis, submit hazard, and, uh, Newville primarily submitted flooding hazard.
Again, it's, it's a long read, uh, probably a good read, but.
All right, thanks, Marcus.
Any other questions on that? Need approval for the adoption?
Yep.
I'm in. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, letter D, response from the Cumberland County Bureau of Election regarding proposed ballot question.
Yeah, we got it scheduled, we got it scheduled back, that talks about, we have to start our petitions for a ballot question in, uh, in February, and I know you have the dates and it goes till, till March. We've got a, we've got deadlines, we need to get organized if we want to get the ballot question on the ballot.
So do we, we have those actual petitions ready to go?
Uh, I, I haven't done them, um, Fred, did you have somebody assigned to do them?
Take a guess.
Oh, you're doing it.
That might be.
You're doing it, Fred?
I guess I am now.
Fred, do you have time to do it?
Sure.
That wasn't very enthusiastic.
Well, that's why we can barely see him on the screen, he can, he can hide his emotions.
Well, the, the first thing, uh, these have to be registered electors, we just can't get anybody on the street to sign, they have to be registered electors.
Correct.
The petition has to contain the question, as I understand.
That's correct.
And then we should have a fact sheet for the people who are circulating the petitions so that they could answer questions, so that everyone is talking off the same page.
So, so along those lines, my plan is that once we have those petitions in hand, that we can start to, to give them out. Um, we'll round up the list of who's taking those petitions around, I know, Michael, you have some folks, I have some folks. I'm sure other people have people that are interested as well. Uh, if we can meet in, you know, meet somewhere, do a short training, talk about, you know, like what you, you just talked about, it has to be certified electors. I believe they'll also, the, the election office will give you a list of those certified le- electors. And then, you know, we can, we can do the take-around, um, and then also open up the, the office, um, a couple Saturdays, uh, for people to come in and sign if they just want to pop in, um, as well. We need a hundred and fifty-four signatures, so.
The first day to circulate is, uh, February sixteenth, and they have to be in by March ninth.
Yep.
If I can help, let me know.
All right. Um, rental license, uh, revocation notices.
Um, I've, I've, uh, drafted letters and they've been actually sent out to, uh, the property at ten Pennsylvania Avenue, uh, that is apartment number three, um. If you want, uh, I just, I'll, I'll read it to you, I think we sent it around to the council members though.
Mm-hmm, you did.
Yeah, we got it.
We did, and I'm not going to read it to you, so, uh, it, but it does say that, uh, it's notifying you rental license for apartment number three, in the case of, uh, of, uh, ten Pennsylvania Avenue has been revoked. In the case of, uh, one oh two West Big Spring Avenue, the, the entire unit has been revoked because the same people control the building, so, um, those have gone out and, uh, so that, that mission has been accomplished.
Okay, any questions on that?
Yeah, Marcus, how would Yeah, Marcus, how would that be enforced?
Well, we would in accordance with the ordinance, we follow the ordinance. I think it's a matter of taking it to court if they don't if they don't obey.
Okay. I I just didn't see any timeframe when there, that's the reason I asked.
Well, I don't think we run afoul of any of the the normal landlord tenant laws because of they're having their license revoked.
Okay, but I guess I guess I'm just asking, how long is it going to do they have to accomplish this to? Is it done immediately or when they receive a letter or how's that?
Well, I'm sure we're going to follow up with it a few days.
Okay, all right.
And isn't this mostly police action, chief? A lot of these have been complaints that have been made by that you've had to follow up with.
He's muted.
Correct, yes.
So you'll you'll have a good feel for whether they're there or not?
Yes.
So keep us informed if a week goes by and there's there's no action at either place, let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Marcus, thanks, chief.
All right, any other questions on that matter?
Would these involve evictions and I thought the evictions were now with COVID-19?
This isn't this won't this won't be evictions by the landlord tenant action. This will be against the landlord for violating the ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next item IRS response for nonprofit status for the EDA.
On behalf of the EDA, we contacted the IRS, spoke to a nice lady who after a long hold answered and she explained that this is being handled remotely by a subcontractor. They have 90 days from when we filed in November, so we're expecting an answer in in February. She indicated that we were on the list and that we should expect something soon. We ask if they would if she would follow up when we send in a formal request that they notify us as to what action they've taken on this petition. So she says that'll take about three weeks, 45 days, something like that. I think with COVID, like all other government agencies, they've slowed down from their normal level of efficiency. But we expect the answer in February regardless.
Any questions about that?
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else, Mr. Renai?
If something crops up that's relevant, I'll let you know.
Okay. Anything else for Marcus?
Oh, I did one other thing, I did check with on the I let a message with the individual who is working with us on a new lease for a new facility. I'm waiting to hear back from him. He's pretty busy doing other things, I think.
Okay. Mr. Podser, you're up.
Jody Hoffman's been added to the F and M Trust Bank accounts, Franklin Business Account and Mid Penn Accounts. She's also received her bond, 125,000 from Brown and Brown of Lehigh Valley. North Corporation Street, CDVG, the redevelopment authority has approved our documentation and has given us a wage determination for the project. So we will now be able to let the project for bid. Plans are to open the bids on February 26, 2021 at 10 a.m. With an award date of March 30, 2021 at 7 p.m. Tentative start date for the project would be Monday, April 12, 2021. And we've received $100,000 from a block grant for this project. The police pension ordinance was adopted tonight, so please give consideration from council to electing one representative of council to serve on the pension committee. The police union will have one representative. The two members will get together and select one at large representative. Tree trimming was done in the borough on January 12 and 13, 2021 by Cumberland Valley Tree Service, primarily in the South Ward. We would like to have them come back to finish up the North Ward sometime in the spring or summer. Tucky Mechanical Services will be at the Borough Office on February 3 and they will work through the 8th on making renovations to the Borough Office for a customer service window. Our cleaning person, Jody Roberts, has been off. She was off in December for an extended period of time. She has to travel down to Florida, she's been taking care of a relative. She called in this week and said she would be off again for a few weeks. This leaves us with no one for cleaning the Borough Office. I would like you to consider a cleaning person. I did contact a person today, met with her, name is Brenda McKay. She owns her cleaning service, she lives nearby and she is willing to clean the office. Her rate is $23 an hour, it would be two to three hours a week, it's borough interest.
Does Jody get paid monthly or weekly?
She gets cleaned by the number of cleanings, $15 per hour.
Well, we need somebody, so.
You need a motion on that, Fred?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, it's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against say no. Any abstentions, I'm abstaining. Motion carries.
The last item I have is a request to reopen the trailhead on February 1, 2021.
Do you want to handle that now or?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to open the trailhead. It's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions?
When we say open the trailhead, you'd be talking about the facilities there?
The building.
I see, and is a is someone going to be able to clean it?
They will check it every day.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Scott.
Okay, any questions for Fred?
Fred, you also with Scott and our new Borough Secretary closed the MNT loan or the Mid Penn Bank loan.
Yes.
So that's all.
And hi, Jody, back there in the back.
Hi, Jody.
All right. Western cog, Michael.
Cog had no pressing business and did not have a meeting this month.
All right. Public safety, Mr. Darius?
I've already made a few comments, I think that should suffice for this session.
Okay, any questions for him? EDA, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. So Fred provided everybody the board materials from the last EDA meeting and the minutes from the last meeting and the meeting before that too, since it came after our last Borough Council meeting. So you have those, but a few highlights from that that I wanted to focus on. Joe Spezic, who's the like, I'm not sure if he's CEO or managing director, but head of the ship daddy operation. We had invited him to present to the EDA. I thought it would be a good idea to take an introduction for him to the to the EDA and the people that are the board members there. So that happened at the meeting. I think it was a very good meeting. Joe laid out for them what he's doing. There was a lot of conversation about how we can work together. I think it was a good relationship building opportunity for everyone, so that's pretty much it on that unless there are any questions. If not, we did staff updates. The project manager, Chris, talked about the Graham Library Project, which I think I mentioned last time because of the superfluous or or large volume of books that they're being donated over the last several months, they need new storage facilities. They also are looking for a potential location to retail some of the books. And there are ongoing conversations there. Kurt Saylor, who's an EDA board member, contacted Lori Howland, who's the head of the trustee board there or the the volunteer board for the museum. And they're discussing possible locations and funding. I think Bob has had some conversations with Lori as well. And Jason Malat, who is the head of the Prospect Hosting Committee, has has talked to Lori and if she hasn't talked, hasn't talked to Bobby, will, but the hope here is that the EDA can provide a way to find a location and potential funding through various county or state sources to allow this kind of satellite operation to work, which would be great from a number of different perspectives. And if it were located in town, it would create a, you know, help create a sort of a walking ambiance in town in a small storefront. So that's kind of in the works right now. Fred, not Chris talked about funding options. He's focusing right now on blight remediation funding. Mary Kuna, who's the director of the redevelopment authority, is very interested in blight issues. There is a new initiative with funding available for improving blighted properties. Fred's in the process of updating our blight plan and our listings. And the hope there is that we can compete for some of these funds on a going forward basis to either remediate these these properties or if they are not habitable, maybe take them over with some outside funding and turn them into other kinds of profitable operations. He also talked about another initiative that the county is putting out, Affordable Workforce Housing Initiative, where where grant funds would be available for that. And he's talking to folks about the possibility of our qualifying for some of those, given our location near some of the distribution centers and the need for housing that some of those folks may have. This may be a good opportunity for us to get into the some housing acquisition and rehabilitation that would help both, you know, local local workforce people and in the borough as well. Marcus talked about the legal status on the 501(c)(3), so I don't need to go over that. The committee reports, the advisory committee, Joey and I had a conversation last night just to sort of touch base. She and Andrea are working to schedule the organizational meeting, which will probably happen in February. Joey, do you want to say anything or raise any points on this?
Um, no, just that we're going to have, like Jack said, an organizational meeting in February. Right now, there's no projects that we can advise on to the EDA, but I was looking to probably have quarterly meetings. I don't think there's any need for us to have, you know, a meeting every month unless, you know, something pressing comes up. So I think we have everybody that we need, except we're still working on somebody from inner church council and our small business owner has to get back to us yet, so, but everybody else is in place.
Great. And I guess this is probably a report you'll want to make to the Borough Council going forward, so.
Right, right.
I'll take it off my list.
Okay.
The the Prospect Hosting Committee, the consumer survey to find out what kinds of businesses folks in Newville want went out at the end of December. Results are starting to come back, similarly with the business survey, survey of what businesses, what problems they have in Newville and what they would like to see. The hope is we'll get those responses back this month, early next month, be able to analyze it and actually go out and start looking for specific kinds of small businesses to recruit based on what it is that the survey tells us that people are interested in seeing. Our promotional material is pretty well done now. The business recruitment guide is complete. The tri-fold that's going to be mounted on the on the on the website and it's also going to be used for distribution. The EDA authorized 500 hard copies to be made so that we can start distributing them to important important points of contact. The website has been developed, it's we have a working prototype, but it is not yet live. It's still being populated with some in the sections not having everything they need, but we're working on that. If you want to take a look at it, you can go to the Borough website. And then you'll see on the upper right side a tab for the EDA. If you click on that tab, it will take you to the EDA site. Mostly what you'll see is more information to come. But if you want to go behind that and look at some of the things that are there, which is this is not available to the public, but if you want to look at it, put in capital E D A, 123, and that'll take you into the website. And then you can browse through the various sections and see the status of development at this point. The whole business recruitment guide is on there, so you can see that final version. But the other sections are still under development, you know, we're hoping within the next few weeks to have to be able to go live with them. And let's see, finally, on the promotion end, Andrea is working with the Katic, with their PR people to try to get some media coverage for the for the EDA and hopefully getting some stories in the Valley Times Star and other local papers. So that's in the works now. What else? Chris talked about the strategic plan development, the tri-fold summary that he developed, which you have in your in your documents there. The this meeting was devoted to a member discussion of some of the ideas in the strategic plan, particularly on nurturing small businesses. And there were a number of ideas that were brought up by the EDA men. A lot of them pertain to traffic, which is, you know, topical tonight and topical always. But the need to really do some things with our traffic problems to be able to bring small businesses into town and sustain them. Things like improving traffic flow on Main Street. We may be doing one side only parking, creating additional off-street parking areas, addressing illegal truck turning at the traffic light, that's topical. Looking at other kinds of things like improving the streetscape, developing local grants and funding sources for business signs, facade improvements, planters, landscaping, window treatments. That could be something that we are able to do to help small businesses to to be able to install themselves in some of our buildings. You know, one of the ideas that one of the commissioners with the EDA members came up with was given the proximity of the rail trail, putting bicycle racks at the local restaurants. So there were, you know, a number of things that were explored by the members that they're going to continue to explore. Some talk about incentives for business owners, maybe putting together a support package of some small amount of funding for signage, website updates, window treatments, that sort of thing, where new business coming into town would get this sort of voucher for a certain amount of money to do the kinds of things that help them get established. Chris is also going to put together a technical assistance program for things like marketing plans. Katic is going to work with them on that. And Michelle Crowley at the Carlisle Chamber of Commerce, who has a lot of background in this area, is going to work as well. So that's pretty much it. I guess the last thing I would say is Chris is going to be at our meeting next week to give a review of our first year of operation. So I think that's going to be a good opportunity for people to ask questions and get sort of an in-depth briefing on how things are going.
Any other questions for Jack?
Are there any sources?
Are there any sources of fundings available in the county or in the state or other sources that could be tapped into?
For what purpose, Bob?
For economic renovation, development.
Well, I mentioned a few of them here that Chris is looking into. And, you know, we's continuing to look into these new sources, but as we know, you know, the tourist money from Katic, which is what, a lot of which has been used in the past for development purposes, just hasn't been available. The hope is it will be on a going forward basis. But, you know, as I talked about in here, Chris is looking actively at some specifics, additional funding sources.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jack. Recreation Committee, Mr. Stinkovitz.
Yes, sir. Well, I'd like to report one, one area in this town is a profit center. Thanks to Fred and his group. Our two vending machines we had here, two twenty, two thousand, two thousand twenty, we had a net profit of $600. So I don't think anybody else is thinking like you say, their program developed any, secured any money for us, and we did, thanks to Fred and the two vending machines we have. I went down to Community Park and wanted to Trailhead. So thanks, Fred, for $612 a profit for that. I'd like to report that. Number two, we met with the Kiwanis Club, which I'm a part of. We try to do something every year for the children in, in different, different ways with, other than the Christmas parade, a different thing. So we come up with an idea, we'd like to have a, say, fishing program at the park. We'd like to schedule on May 1st. I checked with Fred and this time there's no other obligations at the park. And one of the things we're going to try to do is collection fishing rods throughout the town. We have different people who are willing to donate fishing rods to be able to distribute to the children and the younger people in the community. And then we checked with the Fish Commission, and they will bring some representatives out here on May 1st to have some kind of fishing clinics for children. So we have that. It works. Just got to check and make sure it's not going to interfere with, with the fishing season start, as this time it's not going to. But we just have a good thing going, and I just hope that we can get this thing done. It's not going to cost the borough any money. It's going to be contributions. The only thing we need from the borough is the park. So that's our goal for that. And last meeting, we had discussed the shed behind the backstop, trying to make a little press box or something out of that. And Fred and Scott and Kevin Yost and I met down here two weeks ago, discussed the things that we can do. And we don't know if we're going to tear it down or block the present building in just to make it more secure and put a little press box on top. We have no idea as of yet what we're going to do. Kevin Yost is a process of getting pricing for different, different options. But Fred suggested we hold off till next year for we'd get some funding through the company county for that. And just to do a couple more projects within the park on one big fund. So we don't know what's going to happen with that yet, but where that's what we're looking for. And I saw it really happened for the, the park. I'll keep you updated on the, on the fishing program.
Sounds like a good idea. Any questions, Fred? All right. Thanks, Ed.
Yes, sir.
Quality of life, Mrs. Deal.
Okay. Well, first of all, um, I know that Fred has some correspondence from some of the other people we donated to. But I did have a thank you card from Mark Butts, who's representative of the Big Spring Area Food Bank, thanking us for the $250 donation from monies that we raised from the resale. So, you know, people are very, very appreciative of that effort that we did for the resale. The other thing, like quality of life with the help of Fred, of course, Darcy newcomer, who is with the ambulance here in Newville, is looking to purchase a new ambulance. And so we applied for a grant through the CDBG Fund through the Development Authority of Cumberland County. And, you know, we're hoping that we got it. If we do, it would probably be around $162,000, and Darcy would have to come up with 500, yeah, 500. I bet she wishes $50,000, because the total was going to be $212,020. But kind of a state-of-the-art ambulance, first of all, be a four-wheeled, a four-by-four, which is good for our area, because we do have a lot of outlying areas that are our ambulance services. But it's also going to have a sanitation system in it where, you know, it can be completely sterilized, you know, within five minutes. They're looking to have a striker burning on it so that, you know, there's less contact, you know, with the, with the patient. I mean, it just has a lot of things that is, would be beneficial to our community and also to the protection of the patient that they're transporting and to the ambulance crew. And if people think that our ambulance doesn't do a lot throughout the year as far as transporting, they had 1,050 incidents in 2020. So I, for this area, I think that's a lot. So, you know, let's hope that we can add, they can get the grant and Darcy can come up with the 50,000 and, you know, if nothing else, maybe we can help her, you know, with some fundraising to be able to get it. But I think with the fire company and stuff, they should be able to come up with the $50,000 to help them secure that. The other thing that I was thinking about doing, you know, we've all been COVID down for so long, and I know it's, it's a year away, but I was hoping that we could do something maybe on New Year's Eve again. You know, for a few years, we did, you know, the, the spring drop and, you know, we had a lot of activities going on on New Year's Eve. It was a good family time where people didn't have to travel to Carlisle or Tuppenceburg. They could stay right here in the community. And so I was hoping that we could do some kind of a New Year's Eve festival if I can get council's approval to go ahead and, you know, try to make some plans to do that and, you know, start trying to recruit some funding for it. I did have a conversation with the gentleman who won the Halloween Wars pumpkin carving contest that was on television. You know, he is a local guy. And he said that, you know, he would help, you know, with any kind of information he could have. He's too busy to really help sit down and plan things, but he would help us as far as giving us some ideas, because I was thinking, you know, maybe we could have some ice sculptures. You know, not anything big, you know, or elaborate, like, you know, some of the towns do around here, but just something, you know, nice to make some nice festivities for the new year. So that's basically all I have.
Any questions for Joey? All right. Thank you, Joey. Administration Committee, Mr. Crouch.
All right. Primary thing with the Administration Committee is the filling the vacancy on the Borough Planning Commission. The Mr. McNally is retired from the commission. J D Arman has not been able to attend the meetings because we've been, they've been on Zoom, and he is not a friend of technology. So he has, Fred spoke with him, and he is willing to act as an alternate member to the, to the planning commission. And then that, we had two candidates, James Franklin and Jason Malat. Both were, were good candidates. And if we, with Jay stepping aside to a, a service and, and in an alternate role, then we really have an opening to nominate both of them or, or you put both of them in, in open seats on the planning commission. And so that, that was the recommendation of the committee is to nominate both of these gentlemen or to, to appoint both of these gentlemen to the open seats and, and to appoint J D Arman as an alternate member on the commission.
All right. That sounds like a motion, Michael.
That is a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Just one thing, you know, Jay, Jay will still be allowed to attend the meetings as an alternate. He can, he has voice on the group. He just would not be able to vote unless, unless somebody else is absent. I think it's good to have an alternate anyways. So, all right. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Somebody said no. Motion carries. Anything else, Michael?
Oh, that's all I have.
Any questions for Mike? All right. Citizen comment period. Fred, did you have anything?
No, no comments were received in the mailbox or by email.
Okay. And there's nothing on the YouTube page? Lucy is in, in our meeting, so if she wants to chime in, she, she could have done that. All right. Correspondents, go ahead, Fred.
We have a letter from Bob Cantz. On behalf of the Big Spring Kiwanis, we want to thank you and council for organizing the Community Co-Drive Kiwanis Parade and the Police and Fire Department Toy Giveaway. It was truly one of the most gratifying events that we participated in. We gave out 250 stockings, our Santa welcome kids for pictures without compromising safety measures. And what a sight to see so many kids benefit from coats and toys. Newville did good, very, very good. We are very pleased to be part of it. Sincerely, Bob Cantz, President of the Big Spring Kiwanis Club. We also have a letter from the John Graham Library dated December 21st from Mary Schodel, the Director, thanking the Borough Council for a $500 donation to the library for 2020. We've received a letter from Pendot December 30th, 2020, advising that data will now be collected through a company called French Engineering, and they will be doing surveys as part of the ECMS project, collecting data on state roads statewide. So if you see traffic counters out, they will be taking traffic counts on various state routes in the borough. We have a letter from the Cumberland County Bureau of Elections advising that the office must be notified, notified of positions that are becoming vacant. The positions that will be up for election this year include mayor, three council members, tax collector, and also constable in the north and south wards. The Harrisburg Bicycle Club would like to have a permission to use the Trailhead Facility in the borough on Sunday, September 19th, for a rest stop from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. as part of the Three Creek Century Bike Race. Do we have a motion to approve that, Scott?
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
I mean.
It's been moved and Jack seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I have a letter from Neighbors in Christ thanking the borough for the proceeds of the sale, resale, $250 was donated. They noted that in last year, 137 clients were served, and the demand is greater at all times. They're hoping another round of stimulus funding and extension of unemployment benefits will help. That was signed by Kathy Day, the corresponding secretary. That's all for correspondence.
Good. A lot of positives. Very good. Any old business? Lucy?
I just wanted to follow up with the letter from Mr. Cantz on the December 19 festivities in town. It was the coldest day of the year, I think, so far. Ed, Ed was out, Joey was out giving coats away. The police were, were working the, the wagon full of toys. My grandson happened to be in town. Ed saw me and I said, well, I couldn't. They don't live in town anymore. He said, yes, come on. So we walked down to Corporation Street, which was the next stop. And it was just really nice. I mean, my grandson and I had to get a, I think, I don't know if they gave us a bag or a box, because we had so much stuff for him and his three siblings. Stockings and fruit and toys and stuffed animals, books. And it was just really nice to see our police force out interacting with the community. So I just, I just wanted, I, it seems so long ago, because it's almost February. But when Fred read that letter, it really was nice. And it was, I know I appreciated all the work that went into it. And you're all to be congratulated. And Joey, and when I got a coat for my granddaughter and on it. In fact, everything they got for Christmas, it came from like, my daughter wrote on them, and so did I, from the Borough of Newville Businesses, Kiwanis Club and individuals, because I know Mr. Darius, I assume he followed through. He was going to contribute to the coat drive.
He did.
I just wanted to let you know, it was really made my heart warm for Newville. It was very nice. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. That was nice of you to, to say the, the things you did about our town and the people that made it happen.
Well, my, my son-in-law and my grandson are here. They, since they've moved, they're finally taking their things out of my house. So we were taking his piece of furniture and I couldn't lift it. I mean, I was out on the sidewalk and I said to my son, I said, Matt, I can't, I can't do this. And Officer Keller was walking up to get in vehicle. And Matt goes, hey, can you help me here? And he's like, I gotta move all these people. And I like, but he came over. He picked it up, took it to the van. If he gets in trouble for that, I'm sorry, but it was like, just so nice. And people walked by who had been getting toys and said, well, isn't that nice to see? So it really, nothing planned there, but it really shows the goodwill of our police and how it is seen by the community. So you all deserve it. Thank you all.
Well, I guess this is old business because, because it just happened. But Fred, we didn't, we didn't designate which was the three-year and which was the four-year for Planning Commission. We should probably do that.
That's correct.
Michael, do you have a recommendation on that?
No, not really. Either, either, I mean, it, they're really, I, I don't know that it really matters.
No, I just, we, we just need to identify it so that way when it comes time to renew, we would know.
No, we can just, we can put Jason in as the four-year and James as the, as the three-year. That's the, that's the order we interviewed in.
Okay. So let's, let's make that a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Who say no? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Any other new business? Okay. I don't think we have a need for an executive session.
No.
Very good. Nice. All right. Anything else for the good of the order before we head out?
Thanks, you leadership.
Well, thank you. All right. I'm waiting on you.
I make the motion. We adjourn till. I make the motion. We adjourn till February 2nd at 7:00.
Okay, there's a motion. All right. All those in favor say aye. Oppose say no. All right. Have a great